All right, three, two, one. All right, I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item, we have our office to our student board, alternate student board member, Braden, so if you'd like to stand up, I'll put that camera right on him. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the position of alternate school board member, which I am now assigned.
The duties of the position of alternate student board member, to which I am now assigned.
All around.
We don't ask for a lot, thank you.
We know where you live. Uh, next item, we have a capital project update from our alternate over.
Good evening, everyone, thank you all today. Uh, so it should be a packet in front of you, we'll just run through this quick and then answer any questions that you guys have. Um, so starting over at Kingsborough, uh, the playground in the back of the building is complete, playground is open. Uh, new parking lot is complete, striped, uh, just breaking out a couple pieces of some site signage. Um, and then obviously the sod you see in those pictures will go down over the next couple of weeks. There's also some landscaping and things that'll follow that. Um, into the main office, that is complete minus some punch list items that need to get buttoned up, uh, operational, um, ready for school to open. Just some cleanup, minor things like that throughout that building. Um, as you can see in the picture, there's some temporary railings at the new ramp, those have been measured and ordered. Be a couple of weeks that we'll have those temporary things in place, uh, but the new ones are on their way. So just, just some basic cleanup, uh, punch list items throughout there, but the playground in the back area that, uh, is open, uh, the parking lot's open. Moving on to Boulevard, uh, playground equipment is installed and complete, they just finished backfilling around the new sidewalks over there. So just working on cleaning up, getting the equipment out of that play area, um, and that'll be ready for the kids. Same thing in the main office, uh, complete, just down to some punch lists, moving some stuff around, just general cleanup. Um, but that is operational and again, ready for, ready for school to open. Uh, if you look out front, uh, new bollards are installed, so you don't have any accidental, um, vehicle traffic coming down the front of Boulevard. Um, so that has, those have been installed, again, some landscaping, sod, all that will come all at once throughout all these schools, um, to get those sites cleaned up. Keep going over to Park Terrace, again, playground is complete and mulched, uh, fencing is in place. Uh, main office is complete, ready to be used, again, just general punch list cleanup items, uh, a couple of odds and ends, but ready for, ready for school to open. Um, same thing there, sod and landscaping will happen over the next couple of weeks, um, into the early fall. Um, and be established and ready to go for the winter and into the spring. Moving over to McNabb, again, very similar, fencing is up, playground's up, mulch is back, everything's backfilled, just working on general cleanup. Uh, main office, uh, same thing, just getting you guys moved in there, um, and doing some general cleanup. Uh, and then again, we'll have the odds and ends, punch list, uh, loose ends to tie up when school's back in session, but ready for, ready for the kids to come back. Continue over to Miko, uh, last elementary school, so we are just setting up the scaffolding to do the roof on the peaked area. Um, and working with Chad and his team, we also removed the playground, um, that was hazardous in the back of the school district, made that safe, leveled that off, um, have that filled in, um, so that is no longer, they're no longer a safety concern. Um, and we'll move into Mc-Miko throughout the school year and renovate the main office and do all that work in there as well as the update to the chlorination system, um, for the well that's in that building. Over at the transportation facility, the road has been widened at some of those tight turns going up that long stretch. Um, the oil-water separator is installed, complete and functioning properly again. Um, so that was part of that emergency project that, uh, the board approved a few months back. Uh, that work is complete and we'll have our final pay up in this month and they will close out that contract, um, and able to get that paperwork buttoned up with the state for that one. Moving into the middle school, so the middle school pods are complete, um, and ready to go. The center area has been, the rises have been removed, we do have some temporary railings up for now, but again, those have been measured and on order. Should only be a couple of weeks with those temporary things, just protecting that center area. Uh, but the carpet is down, rises are gone, um, much safer, uh, in that area. Again, pods are done and turned over, ready for use for the kids to come back. Um, and then the main office and thus of your renovations is the work left to complete there and that'll go throughout the school year and into next summer. Over at the high school, a lot of the, or all of the corridors have been, uh, tiled, uh, lockers have been installed. Uh, definitely have some, some work to do on those lockers to get them up to the quality that we expect for installation. The lockers, um, are in though and operational for school. Uh, roofing is complete, uh, so they did the last rip last week, um, so now it'll just be a lot of that edge metal, um, and everything. All the roofing areas that were in this project are complete at the high school. Parking lot has been paved, uh, signage is up and sealed and striped, um, so that's turned over and ready to be used. Going back to some of these other ones, so the, uh, all roofing is now complete at Park Terrace, Boulevard, uh, McNabb, and the high school, um, is done, and the only one we have left is Miko. Um, so then all the roof that was part of this project will be complete once Miko's done, uh, this, this fall, and we got that well done, ahead of schedule. Any questions on any of that?
I don't know what you, I'm sorry, do we have a Miko, is there a partial playground there, or?
Yes, so if you look at that one picture, there is a newer playground in the back area there. We took down the old wooden one that was a safety concern, uh, but you still do have it.
Yeah, I know, I had a lot of points.
Taking out the wooden one.
Sir, can I understand, do we have swings anywhere in this district? Are swings allowed?
All of the new playgrounds have, have a section of swings, yeah.
So we got to have swings at all the playgrounds?
Yes, yep. If you, you can kind of see in some, like, Park Terrace has a big chunk of swings right there, uh, right in the front of McNabb, um, in the back of Kingsborough, and then in the back at Boulevard in these pictures, but yeah, there's swings at every. Miko, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that, that one has swings on it or not?
Yeah, I guess it does.
I know you talked a lot back about the Boulevard playground in the street at night time. It looks like there's a much larger fence all the way around, that's why they go all the way around the playground.
So the last section we gotta do is the gate, where we've been working in and out of with all the equipment, so that'll be a ten foot, but the rest of it now goes all the way around and it ties to the backside of the building at a ten foot, yes, yep.
The high school lockers, um, you said there was work to be done.
Yes, the.
But the, the last thing that I think I heard is that there was a major problem and that they might be replaced.
I don't know about replaced, but definitely we're not signing off on it or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so they cut, so it's all openings, um, that they took the old lockers out and they just ran in and slammed all the new lockers in and didn't take the time to level them out, shim them out. There, there are some, um, deficiency with the wall that are just kind of, there's some waves in there, but they needed to pick a point, stick with it, and run it, not just let the lockers wave with the wall. Um, so they've been put on notice, there's a lot of, there's, are some pieces that need to get replaced, some dense damage of lockers themselves that need to get replaced. A lot of work on the trim to make it really look finished and pick a point. Like I said, there are, some of whom are not going to be perfectly flushes because of the way it sits in the existing walls, but they can't bob and weave with the wall, they need to pick a line and go across. So there's definitely work that needs to be done up there and there are some that need to be replaced.
And Bob, it's, it's ninety-nine percent installation.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's all.
The quality locks are just, they're in good shape. They did a poor job in some cases with the install, that will be corrected.
Are they usable?
Yes.
So what's the plan as far as, you know, if you do replace or repair or whatever you do, you do it during the, during the school year?
We'll do it at night or pick a break most likely, so get, try to get everything squared away for Christmas break or April break or one of the breaks and, and get it done.
The sections come, they're welded lockers, there might be four tiers welded together. So you can do groups of them at a time without taking all the lockers out of the walls. So we would work second shift around breaks until they're all completed and corrected.
Ooh, is he coordinating the scholars themselves to get them to pull their cell over here? How about the numbering of the lockers, I know that my locker proceeded, I was concerned about the numbering. It wasn't a lot of random reasons to how they're numbered.
I don't know, Mike, Caitlin, if you want to answer that, but, um, there's, that was something that we can obviously change very easily. If it doesn't make sense with the way they're numbered or how they're numbered, if we'd like to change the numbering scheme, it's just that nameplate on them, that again, when they come back and do the rest of the fixes they gotta do, they can replace those.
We can look and get you exactly what you want, it's replacing a tad. We started at one location of the building, worked it around, um, it may not make logic for the way you want them, so we can definitely correct that and take care of that with you.
He really does bike bringing that right up in there.
Yeah, just holistically speaking from my perspective, but I know we've said it over numerous times, this project was addressed safety, functionality, and aesthetics. Um, I feel like we've succeeded in that regard. Uh, the, obviously the vestibules in the middle school, high school still need to be made more secure, but as far as the roofwork, uh, the parking lot work at the high school and Kingsborough, all the playgrounds are much safer. The widening of roads, uh, the transportation at Park Terrace, just better utilization of our facilities across the board, so commend, uh, Mike and CS Arch and, and obviously Turn, Bob and Turner for the work that they've done. Um, you know, the roofs, everybody who's been here a while knows that we've had buckets and, and catch basins all over this district, so uh, I'm very pleased with how this project's progressing, certainly the, uh, field at Kingsborough, remediating that contaminated field and creating that off-street drop-off and pickup, parking, making the playground in the back that much more secure, um, it's a great utilization of the space we have, so it's great seeing it come to fruition. So tomorrow Osama and I are, uh, meeting with a bus over at Kingsborough, I want, we're gonna create a video and post it tomorrow so that people who are bringing their children know, can, can kind of see what, uh, to expect. You know, the biggest thing that we've been trying to get across to people at Kingsborough is when you see the bus, a stop sign, the flashers, even though we created a nice big drop-off for busing in front of the school, there's no physical barrier between the bus lane and the two lanes, which is now two-lane traffic. I talked to the mayor today and he's pleased as punch to, to tell the community that, uh, it's gonna be two-way traffic twenty-four seven. Uh, so that was an objective for, in this project as well. But when bus, when the arms out and buses are unloading, even though the, it's curbside in front of the school and it's a ways from the road, there's no barrier, it's a DOT law. Cars need to stop in either direction. Talked to Mike Etherton today, uh, he's gonna communicate that to the SRO, uh, so we're gonna need the GPD's help, but we're gonna try to get a video out to, uh, educate the community, when they're bringing their children to drop off, pick up, they see bus signs flashing in front of the school, they need to stop. So that's the bigger safety piece of communication we need to get across. Anything else for Bob?
I will say that, you know, there's, there's still a lot to be done out there, well, lockers, main office, even the pods, they look great, there's still punch lists, and things happen, so if you were in the building, you're gonna see that stuff, our biggest, like how your other son, crunching into ten weeks of school, get the kids back in there, make it safe, make it functional. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done to make it to the quality that we want it to be, um, and we'll make sure that the contractors give us what we need.
There's also one more year of construction, so we'll see you again. We do go through all of, of twenty-four with this current project.
I have told the community that, uh, the most disruptive work is now complete, is that correct?
One hundred percent.
Definitely, road closures, major roof work, may, we have Miko majority throughout the year, which is kind of out of sight, out of mind over there, and then, uh, the main offices here at the high school and the middle school. Um, so yeah, I would agree that the majority of that is, there is the other, uh, federal funded work that is coming right behind it. Um, that we actually just received some of our units, um, last week, um, for, so we'll start planning that work. That is the majority of, as at Kingsborough, um, where the, that building will be fully air-conditioned for summer school. Um, so that work will start as we move forward, um, but there will be some minor work at Park Boulevard and High School as well.
And those units, any sort of phase in Boulevard?
Right now they're at transportation, um, we got upstairs in transportation, we might get some over at Boulevard, so thirteen of them go to the high school and four of them go to Boulevard. Um, and they're waiting on our big rooftop units that'll be here in the next couple of months, um, the other being stored on-site. And that's helping us solidify that first chunk of money that we have to spend by the end of this month. Um, and then we have the last bigger chunk that needs to be spent by, uh, September of twenty-four. Um, so really pushing to get every dollar we can from those federal funds that the district was approved for.
Walking around, I'm glad it's no getting where you see it. Uh, next item, we have public comment, anyone here for public comment tonight? Facebook warriors are quiet. Um, board discussion, uh, we have the Board of Education minutes from, uh, August fourteenth meeting. Yeah, I had that list for that. Any questions on those minutes, motion to approve those? By Ed, seconded by Mike, all in favor? Anybody have anything else for board discussion tonight? All right, moving along to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a brief report tonight, if you believe that. Uh, first and foremost, I'd welcome Braden to the board, thanks for your willingness to, to join. It says a lot about you as a young man, as a student. Um, today was our first of two conference days, we had a great, uh, first day. I think the staff, uh, from I could tell, of course, they tell me they're happy to be back and they thought today was fruitful, today was fruitful and, uh, I think tomorrow's gonna be the same, I think, uh, more than anything, everybody's looking forward to getting our scholars back. I just want to remind parents and guardians of the change, uh, in our start times, sent a letter that's, uh, promulgated on social media, and I'm sure building principals will be reminding them, uh, in various ways in the coming days. We have a few transportation challenges we continue to work through, uh, transportation drivers are still shortage. Um, so we're still working with third-party vendors to, uh, tackle some of those challenges, but, uh, we're hopeful that we can be there, if not perfect by day one, uh, certainly within the first three or four days, we hope to have all things ironed out in regards to transportation of all scholars. Um, obviously by law, we're responsible for transporting scholars who are homeless and we have, uh, some who are in, uh, various vicinities within thirty, forty miles of here, so presents some logistical challenges. You can see in tonight's agenda, there's a lot of extra class assignments, extra preps, and as a reminder to the board and to the community, uh, those are directly due to shortages of teacher candidates. We're still short in a number of departments and our staff members have willingly stepped up to teach extra classes, uh, both extra periods and have extra preps, and by contract, they are compensated accordingly. But in a perfect world, we would have candidates that we could fill those positions, we would have all of our staff teaching five sections in the secondary level with two supervisory duties, that makes the principal's job much easier as well when it comes to supervising scholars. So we appreciate those scholars, uh, obviously they are compensated, but I wanted to point that out in case anybody had any questions, we're not just handing out extra money. It's to serve the needs and ensure our program offerings are, are what they have been for years. So as I've said numerous times, I encourage anybody, uh, with an interest in working in education, uh, to make some inquiries. There's expedited, uh, trans, uh, transitions to get certified in New York State where you can start teaching relatively quickly, uh, even before your permanent certification is done. You can take, uh, bachelor's level education courses right at FMCC, I encourage people to look into that option as well. And if teaching's not your, uh, strength or interest, certainly working in transportation, buildings and grounds, clerical, we have vacancies and opportunities across the district. So that concludes my report, really can't wait to get our scholars back on Thursday, and I'm happy to see all of our ten-month staff members back. And I appreciate the work of builders and groundless, clerical, administration, food services, all those who are here over the summer to ensure that we're ready to go on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions? All right, moving along to our administrator report, so I'll start with the high school principal, Christine Elias, over the summer program, it's like they're all coming in.
Good evening, um, so this year, this past summer, we transitioned to regional summer school for the high school, so HF and BOCE has, um, provided us a majority of our summer learning. We had initially one hundred and twenty scholars enroll in regional summer school for a total of two hundred credits that they could have obtained. At the conclusion of regional summer school, we accrued a hundred and sixty credits or eighty percent, which, um, they follow a fully remote model, so we were unsure, to be honest, what that would look like for our scholars, but I think for a majority of them, it really worked, um, it removes the transportation struggle that some families face. Um, they're, they were able to learn from home, we also, for the scholars, provided them an opportunity to come on-site if they needed support. Um, we had teachers available to them, they could zoom right from our campus, which a lot of, um, scholars did take advantage of, they could get help with homework and those kinds of things as well. Um, in addition to the regional summer school, we did also offer some programming in-house. Um, our senior elective classes like health, um, English twelve were off, offered on-site to make sure that those, um, scholars could obtain the necessary credits. And we had, um, approximately fifty credits earned, um, on campus as well. Um, in addition to that, Regents exams, I'll keep it pretty brief, um, with Regents exams, but we administered, um, out at Amsterdam, a hundred and five total assessments, um, with thirty-six, thirty-six scholars or thirty-six tests, I guess I should say, obtaining a passing rate, which is thirty-five percent. Um, obviously a lot of room for growth there, um, we have to kind of find a way to move forward with improving our test scores because all Regents grades are back up to a sixty-five starting this school year, um, so all scholars will require the five graduate, the five Regents to graduate, all of which they have to get the sixty-five, so we're going from a fifty to a sixty-five, so we're going to have to kind of put some efforts in there to make sure that we have eligible scholars for graduation. Any questions?
So that thirty-five percent that you said is seventy-sixty-five?
That's out of fifty, so those are, um, scholars that obtained a fifty percent because for the August administration, that was still considered passing.
So those are pretty sobering numbers.
That's correct.
Any thoughts on how we go about ramping up, so we're not, and maybe somebody's scholars are passing August?
Yes, so, um, those scholars also do represent some students that may have just decided to retake the exams. Um, and oftentimes they, they might go in without sitting through Regents classes and things of that nature, so it is not just scholars that, um, didn't get the fifty, it is also some that, um, are trying to retest. But going into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, no, you're completely fine. Um, going into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Dr. Wajewski and myself have been working on ways that we can increase proficiency rates. Um, part of that is we will be offering tutoring sessions for our scholars starting in September. Um, there will be one department each day, so math Mondays, for example, Tuesdays could be science, so on and so forth, so that starting in September, we're actively engaging our scholars in prep for Regents exam, so that hopefully we'll see an increase, um, going into the June administration.
So as for the middle school, summer school report, uh, some of these things will be the same as mixed with the elementary, but our dates ran from July tenth through August third, so we had, and we ran a half-day program, so we had kids here from eight to twelve. Uh, they received a breakfast and a lunch, so that kind of engaged a few more of our scholars that come every day. We had a total of sixty-three scholars who engaged six, um, through the program with enough attendance to kind of be here each day. Out of those sixty-three, we had a eighty-nine percent success rate moving on, advancing to the next grade. Um, in our program, we had six core teachers, so we had teachers kind of teaming up. One would be the ELA social studies teacher, the other would be the science and math teacher, so each grade had two of those. Um, and then we were able to provide two enrichment courses to our kids, so one was a Spanish course where many of our scholars will be taking Spanish in the seventh and eighth grade. So even our sixth graders were able to take in every other day, Spanish class. The other enrichment class was more of like, uh, recreations, they went outside, did more of these team buildings, a lot of, you know, phys, more physical activity, but sometimes it would be through games, you know, tasks that they would have to move through. With that, we had a period of SEL each day. One of the goals for us at the middle school was trying to ensure scholars were re-establishing a positive relationship at school. Um, one of the things that I kind of tasked myself with was, we have sixty-three scholars here who weren't engaged, and I went around asking a majority of them why they weren't engaged in the school year. Uh, they were very honest with me, I asked them why they were here, that was my first question. Every day I met them in the cafeteria and say, "I'm going to ask you this question, be thinking of it." A lot of them would tell me that they just weren't here, they weren't here throughout the whole school year. I would look it up and you would have kids who were close to a one hundred absences on the school year. Um, so they knew what the problem was, you know, if I'm here, I'm going to be able to do my work and I will be better. A lot of them would be honest and tell you that they were struggling, right, they were, uh, depressed, it was hard for them to get up in the morning, hard to sleep at night. Um, so, you know, trying to build those relationships to show that you have someone to come to school to, you have someone to talk to, to keep kids engaged, and we're hoping to see that success into the school year with some of these that have moved on to the next grade, so we don't see them again on a fail list, so that they would require summer school, so. Really, that was one of the goals and through the SEL period that was given through family counseling, um, you know, a lot of the kids were able to engage and work on different activities. And then the last thing that we did was the last week, instead of, uh, field trips, or in lieu of a field trip, we did a week-long project with, um, Peter, do you remember his last name? Chris, sort of that him. Not to put you on the spot, but Peter came in, uh, he worked through board games, that was an SEL through board games, getting kids to talk more, be able to engage with each other, so the use of the board game was to kind of tear down some of the walls that they had with, you know, other kids in their cohort, which they will see throughout the school year, but maybe also teachers that they had struggles with through the year, so. Through that, we were also able to provide a more of a, uh, a fun environment, they got thirty minutes of that for the last week, so four days, and provided them with an opportunity to talk with one another through, you know, a situation that they don't typically have the ability to do that. Um, work with board games and, you know, speak with someone next to them.
Peter McPherson.
I knew it was an M, so close. Any questions about, uh, the middle school, summer school program?
All right, and on to, uh, elementary. Um, this year, we actually invited our pre-K students for the first time into the Summer Learning Academy. Uh, we had a, uh, pre-K class that came with us. Um, we had a hundred and twenty-one scholars signed up and, uh, eighty-seven ended up participating, and our daily attendance rate was seventy-five percent. Um, our instructional focuses were on math and reading, uh, as well as SEL. We had a in-house counselor who joined us, as well as a counselor from the Family Counseling Center, uh, who went into classrooms two times per week to, uh, work on some social emotional learning activities with kids. We had transportation, uh, we had a shuttle that went to Kingsborough, McNabb, Park Terrace, that shuttled, uh, roughly thirty students to the Summer Learning Academy. And, uh, lastly, our end of the program celebration, we brought the kids to the new splash pad, and, uh, we had a good time down there, we, uh, they had freeze pops and bracelet making, and they had, uh, little tattoos that they were getting, so, uh, they had a great time down there. And, uh, it was overall a great experience. Any questions?
I saw them having fun in the splash pad.
Yeah, that was great. They had a good time.
It's a great addition to the city. Any other questions, does it have anything? Thanks, guys. Very nice to be down the slot, but next up, items of the student board member report, you have anything? He just wants to say how awesome it is to be here.
It's great to be here. I don't have anything to report.
You will never.
You ready to come earlier than they did last year?
Yeah. Reluctantly.
We appreciate that spirit. That was enthusiasm right there. I'll call your parents if I'm starting to wake you up at five, just so you have time to get ready. Uh, next item is recommended action, we have several hundred of those, uh, nine point zero one through eighteen point one hundred and twenty-seven. Uh, you have to separate two to vote on separately, eighteen six three and eighteen one one three. Any questions or comments on any of those? All right, motion to approve the nine oh one through the eighteen one twenty-seven. All right, motion to approve the nine oh one through the eighteen one twenty-seven by Kevin, seconded by John. All in favor of those? All right, motion to approve eighteen six three and eighteen one one three by Kelly, seconded by Heath. All in favor? Yeah, I'm motioning to go into executive session to discuss student matter tonight. By Mike, seconded by Kevin. All in favor? All right, thank you. There'll be no action taken afterwards.